Good evening and welcome to this, the December fourteenth meeting of the Livermore City Council, the holiday edition. So happy Hanukkah, happy, happy Christmas and happy holidays to all. With that, I declare the call to order. The roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Here.
Councilmember Coomer.
Here briefly.
Councilmember Carling.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Here.
Mayor Marshawn.
Here.
Okay, if you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Cue the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright. So participating in tonight's meeting, this meeting is being conducted pursuant to provisions of the Brown Act and recent executive orders issued by the governor to facilitate teleconferencing to reduce the risk of COVID-19 transmission during public meetings. The city of Livermore has met all of the applicable noticing requirements and the public is welcome to participate in this meeting. Tonight, we're using the Zoom meeting platform. Members of the public can participate by submitting written comments through the Zoom Q and A feature or can provide verbal comments using the raise hand feature or star nine if you're calling in on the phone when the public comment period opens for the item you wish to speak on. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. Comments should be no more than 500 words or three minutes. If you submit multiple comments for a single item to the Q and A feature, the last comment will be read into the record and all other comments will be added to the public record. The mayor, that's me, will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments are read or voiced into the record. The citizens forum, if you have a comment or farewell or congratulatory comments for outgoing or incoming members of the council, please provide those comments during item six point one. So with that, we will go to proclamations and presentations. We have a proclamation for departing council members. That's me and councilmember Coomer. And a legislative update from Senator Glazer. Certainly, it has been very gratifying to have worked with Senator Glazer. He's been a tremendous advocate for the city of Livermore and certainly appreciate his outreach, the, the tag team, town halls that he does and his staff is always available. So I greatly appreciated working with Senator Glazer and certainly appreciate everything he's done for our community. So thank you. With that, we will hand this off to Senator Glazer's office.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Loud and clear.
Terrific. I can see you can't see me, but a real pleasure to, to see you. I want to have, I have some remarks to make about you in just a moment, but I want to acknowledge Vice Mayor and Mayor-elect Bob Warner. I want to acknowledge councilmembers Bob Coomer, Trish Monroe and Robert Carling and certainly your great city manager, Mark Roberts, who I've had a chance to have a number of conversations with in the last couple of weeks. But I've had a great working relationship, but Mayor, with you and the city and your staff. I know that the agenda has me listed as a legislative update, but I really like to defer that until another week or another next, next year, a few weeks from now. I really like to spend some, my few minutes acknowledging and honoring my friend, Mayor John Marshawn and Councilmember Bob Coumber. I have some beautiful resolutions to present to you. You can't see them now, but they will be sent to you so you can enjoy them in your, in your retirement. But let me start with Mayor Marshawn. You've had an incredible run of service to your community, thirty plus years, not just being mayor, but serving on the council. You're, you're, you'd spent time on the Zone Seven Water Agency. You, you've done so many things to improve the quality of life in Livermore. I could go on and on with all the accomplishments and I think others may speak to them, but it's quite, it's quite a long list. And in summary though, I would like to say I, I sincerely appreciate your service, your leadership. You, you live and breathe public service and it shows in all that you have done, your thoughtfulness and engagement and energy, even up to the last day. And so I, I thank and honor you, congratulate you for all these great years and I look forward to being able to present to you a resolution that reflects my appreciation for all that you have done. Let me also say that I am also pleased to be able to honor Councilmember Bob Coumber. I know that you are retiring from your public service to focus on some more important issues in your life and I applaud you for that. I want to congratulate you on your wonderful years of service to Livermore, not just the city council time, but what you did on the East Bay Regional Park District. I, I hope that you can every day look up at the beautiful open space around you and feel such great pride for the energetic and successful work that you and your colleagues have done to protect our open space that's so important to the quality of life that we have in our community. I have a suitably framed resolution to present to you as well. I hope that to both of you that we can stay in touch in the years ahead and find other ways to partner in service, serving our community. I want to congratulate Bob Warner on being elected as the next mayor. I want to congratulate Brittany Kick as a member of the council now, being sworn in. I look forward to working with you in the years ahead and providing a legislative update in the not too distant future. So to the retiring members, congratulations and thank you for this opportunity to share my thoughts.
Thank you, Senator.
Mayor, you are muted. Councilmember Coumber, would you say anything?
Oh, I just wanted to say thank you, Senator Glazer. I wasn't expecting that. It's, I'm honored and a little misty eyed. So I, thank you for showing up over here tonight and, and your thoughtful words. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, Senator, thank you so much. It's really been a pleasure working with you. Your passion that you bring to your office has been obvious and it really has, I think, been remarkable to work for Livermore and for the region. So again, thank you for your, your end ending support and I look forward to you continuing to work with Mayor-elect Warner. So thank you again.
Thank you both. Thank you.
Okay. So with that, we move on. There is a proclamation from Supervisor Scott Hagerty. And Scott Hagerty has been a tremendous champion for the Tri-Valley and for all of Alameda County. He's been a great advocate for people that are unsheltered, for, he's been working with the transportation. Everybody knows that he's a champion for transportation and really was the first chair of Valley Link and really stood that up from the very, very beginning. Working within, on the ACTC, the Alameda County Transportation Commission. He's always been very passionate about, about his role as the supervisor. And it really has been a privilege to work with someone who is so passionate and so committed to the quality of life for the people in, in this region. So my thanks to Supervisor Scott Hagerty for the great, great work that he has done. I think I surprised him last week by presenting him with a proclamation at the Valley Link Board Meeting. And with that, I'd like to again, thank him for the great work that he's done here. And now I'll, I'll hand it over to, to you.
Thank you, Mayor Marshawn. Appreciate it. You know, when I do these things, I'm often reminded of a story Pete Wilson told after he was governor. He said he got up the next day after he had left office and he got all dressed up and got his tie on and went outside and got into the backseat of the car and the car didn't move. And I think that's, you know, we're just a couple of old guys right now, John. And, and although we don't have chauffeurs like the governor, maybe we could meet at Beebs or somewhere and have breakfast, you know, after all this. But you know, it's a, there's a, there's a couple of ways I've said you can, you can retire. And one is you, you just put everything in your cardboard box and you walk out the door. Or you have resolutions like this, you have distinguished people such as Senator Glazer come in and, and present accommodations. And in a different time, I think we'd probably be having a party. And I would like to say, John, I'm going to do yours last. I'm going to do Bob's first. But you know, I, I think that we've had some great wins in Livermore. I think of the Bankhead. I think of now Valley Link, working on homeless issues. So many things that the Board of Supervisors, myself and your city staff, Mark Roberts has been great help. But just getting the stuff done for the people that we represent. And I think that's why you and I and Bob got into this. And I think that's why Bob Warner wants to continue as mayor is because he wants to continue to see some of these works. But you know, I, I hate to do this, but I'm going to do this. I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution from the Board of Supervisors because I think there's a lot of really cool stuff in both of these. Would that be alright, Mr. Mayor?
You're the supervisor, so I will defer to you.
All right. Well, here it comes then. I'll leave the whereas's out. There's just a bunch of whereas's and an out there forebear and then a further more resolve. But it just basically says great job to both of you. But the Board of Supervisors, County of Alameda, State of California proudly commends Councilmember Bob Coumber in honor of his outstanding leadership and service to Livermore. And prior to his career in public service, Councilmember Coumber became well known for his astonishing feats, becoming the first person in a wheelchair to summit Mount Diablo, North Peak, Mission Peak and the entire Aloney Wilderness Trail and the fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty foot White Mountain in two hundred and, in two thousand and seven. As a result of his accomplishments, Councilmember Coumber was not only inducted into the California Outdoors Hall of Fame in two thousand and seven, but was also commended by former President of the United States, George Bush, with his President Council on Physical Fitness Community Leadership Award in two thousand and eight. Councilmember Coumber utilized his passion for hiking and expertise and trails to give back to his community by serving expertly on the East Bay Regional Park Board Advisory Committee from two thousand and eight to two thousand and sixteen and on the Livermore Area Recreation Park District. In recognition of Cooper, Councilmember Coumber's devotion to serving his community and all of his achievements, the Wounded Warriors Foundation presented Councilmember Coumber with the Spirit Award. And among his many other accomplishments since being elected to the city council in two thousand and sixteen, Councilmember Coumber has helped manage the approval and development of this Livermore's new city council chambers, Emergency Operations Center, supported in development of the equality equity, I'm sorry, Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee and provided crucial guidance to leadership in the development of the downtown plan, including the newly opened Veterans Way in Stockman's Park. Furthermore, Councilmember Coumber effectively represented this city on a regional committee such as the Alameda County Transportation Commission Paratransit Advisory and Planning Committee and the Livermore Amador Valley Transit Authority Board of Directors in efforts to provide safer and more efficient transit network. Councilmember Coumber leadership has not only secured a better future for the city of Livermore, but also serves as an inspiration for all those seeking to devote their lives towards serving the communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, County of Alameda, State of California does hereby commend Councilmember Coumber on this fourteenth day of December twenty twenty for his outstanding work and distinguished service to the Livermore City Council as a Livermore City Council member with and for the residents of Alameda County. And furthermore, the Board of Supervisors extends its appreciation to Councilmember Coumber and wishes him good health and happiness in his future endeavors. So that was Councilmember Coumber. I'd like to say I also got to sit with him on the lab to board and, and he's just a great person, always listening, always thoughtful advice and how to proceed and, and just a, a great, great guy to work with. So, but you know, Councilmember, it, it, it's time for you to take a rest. So you know, enjoy your retirement as I know the three of us will and maybe we can all get together for breakfast sometime.
Bet you Scott, it's been a pleasure of mine as well to work with you. So thank you so much.
Do you have the resolution?
I do.
Can you hold it up or do you have it?
You know what? It's not with me right here. No.
It's okay. Just as long as you were able to get it.
I've got three big dogs running around the house. I gotta put it up somewhere where nobody could get to it but me.
I, I understand that. I have two big dogs and actually two big ones and a little one. So I understand what that means. Okay. Now I'm going to do Mayor John Marshawn, who boy, I've known this guy forever. And it's, you know, him and I have had some really great times. I remember we used to go to Sauce a lot and eat burnt ends. And he turned, he turned me on to the burnt ends. Yeah. And, and we've been other places and sometimes John gets a little upset with me and you know, maybe I'm not doing exactly the things that he wants. But you know, we've always been able to do what's best for Livermore and what's best for the region. And I would just like to say, John, I truly will miss working with you. You've done a great job for your city and it's just been a pleasure to work with you. So I'm going to read yours if you don't mind, Mayor.
Okay.
All right. The Board of Supervisors, County of Alameda, State of California proudly commands Mayor John Marshawn in honor of his outstanding service to the city of Livermore. Whereas John Marshawn's service to the city of Livermore predates his passion as mayor, having worked fifteen years for the community as an elected representative on the Zone Seven Water Agency Board of Directors. Mayor Marshawn is also the original member of the Livermore Cultural Arts Commission and served on the Livermore's General Plan Review Committee, working in every capacity, capacity to improve the lives of Livermore residents prior to being elected to city council. And whereas Mayor Marshawn has served on the Livermore City Council from two thousand and five to two thousand and eleven, including four terms as Vice Mayor. Since Mayor Marshawn was first elected mayor in two thousand and eleven, he has proven to be extraordinarily passionate for representing his constituents, which is evident in ascending nature of his career in public service. Whereas through the invaluable work of the city council, Mayor Marshawn has made countless contribution, improving the lives and the well-being of the Livermore residents. Namely, Mayor Marshawn has implemented the utility box mural program, which I know that his wife has painted a few, an accomplished artist on her own, but did a great job with those. Retired the debt of the Livermore Bankhead Theater, which was a sigh of relief for a lot of us.
We did that together.
Yes, we did. We even, we even, we even scoundred a little money out of the county for that. Let's see, where was I? Added fifty new, fifty-seven new pieces of public art at no cost to the public. Closed the Springtown Golf Course, eliminating four hundred thousand annual list loss and creating an opportunity to create eighty-five acres of open space. Moved the Los Pacitas Golf Course out of the city's enterprise fund, preserved the HCIF to be used only for maintaining the Bankhead Theater, successfully depending, defending the city against Measure U. Helped pass Measure P, which continued the, the previously approved development plans of the downtown, downtown Livermore. Bought a Little League intermediate World Series to Livermore. Worked with the American Waterworks Association, United States Conference of Mayor in support of Water Infrastructure Finance Innovation Act. Changed the city's election date from the odd to even years, saving the city seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars per election. Placed council compensation in the hands of the voters, saving the taxpayers a hundred and fifty thousand per year. And helped pass the Drug House Nuisance Abatements Ordinance and the Anti-Vaping Ordinance and committed the city of Livermore to the USCM Play Ball Initiative. Mayor Marshawn has also created far more united communities, often celebrating military homecomings, voting to allow the city to fly the Pride Flag, the POW MIA Flags and participating in the first and subsequent rallies for love and rallies for families and pride. Mayor Marshawn has also celebrated Eagle Courts of Honor, Girl Scout Gold Awards, Blue and Gold Dinners and Arrow of Light ceremonies. The residents of Livermore and Alameda County have long recognized and enjoyed the lasting impacts of Mayor Marshawn's outstanding accomplishments and will be forever grateful for your years of service. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, Alameda County, State of California does hereby commend and recognize Mayor Marshawn on this fourteenth day of December twenty twenty for his exemplary work and distinguished service as the mayor of Livermore with and for the residents of the city of Alameda County. Furthermore, the Board of Supervisors extends appreciation to Mayor Marshawn and wishes him good health and success in his future endeavors. Mr. Mayor, it's been a pleasure. You've been a good guy to work with. Thank you.
I've got the proclamation right here. Thank you so much. I couldn't have done any of that by myself. It always took a, a team effort and I've been very grateful for the great team that I've been able to work with. And I consider you one of the charter members of that team. And yeah, we've had some great lunches at Sauce and I look forward to getting together for some more lunches and some more breakfasts. So thank you so much. It truly has been an honor and a pleasure and we've gotten a lot of stuff done and working for the quality of life for everybody. So thank you for all of your efforts. Thank you for all that you have done and I wish you all the best in retirement as well. You've, you've worked hard and it's time to play hard and enjoy, and enjoy your retirement. Wish you a long, healthy retirement and best wishes to Patty as well.
Yeah, come, come visit, you and Sue, come visit us in Tennessee.
Okay. And small world, world, I got to share this. Patty, I, I used to work with Patty at the Alameda County Water District. So a great lady. And so you guys have a great future together. Wish you guys all the best.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
No problem.
Wow. Well, thank you all. That's a, a very honored, very touched. So with that, I'm going to go to the citizens forum again. If anyone has farewell comments for the, the outgoing or incoming council members, please save those for six point one. We'll get there pretty quickly as you can imagine. So with that, I'll open up the citizens forum. If you please keep the comments to five hundred words or three minutes. This is on a subject which is not on the agenda and the city council can neither deliberate nor take action on items brought to the citizens forum, although they may be brought up for consideration for a future meeting. So with that, I'm going to open up the public comment period and hand this off to the city clerk's office.
City Clerk's Office, please read the comments received over Zoom.
This first comment is from Tri-Valley for Black Lives. This is a public comment from Emily Wilson, a community advocate and one of the founders of Tri-Valley for Black Lives. I wanted to begin my comment by stating that I am a huge supporter of the Equity and Inclusion Working Group and their desire to help create a better, more inclusive Livermore for all people, races, genders, sexualities, abilities and religions. With what is transpired this weekend, I became aware of the need for more clear communication between the city and its constituents. Misinformation spreads fast and it was difficult to put out the fire when there wasn't a clear response to the issue. The meeting notes from the subcommittee were taken out of context and the intent behind what the group was doing got lost after the impact it had on some of our residents. I'd like to close out by thanking our city leaders for taking the first step towards creating a more equal and just future for all because black lives matter. The next comment is from Ron Blair. Generally, I believed our city to be fairly well-run. Thank you to those outgoing members who have contributed to our beautiful city and its, excuse me, prosperity. That said, I'm here for the sole purpose of conveying my extreme displeasure at the intent and activities associated with the Community Wide Assessment and Action Project. This is one of the poorest attempts at exploring the state of inclusivity in our community that I could have ever conceived. What a waste of time, money, effort and focus, especially considering the examples of non-inclusive symbols explored during the brainstorming session. And then as the mayor stated, we'll save the other comment for item six point one. It's a congratulations. And that concludes the, oh, excuse me, looks like someone just added one. Okay. This one is from Jerry Antolik, A-N-T-O-L-I-K. Is there any plan to repair the uneven papers downtown that have become a serious trip hazard now that foot traffic is gone? Thank you, John and council members.
Mayor, before we go to live public comments, I believe the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee wanted to say a few words.
Vice Mayor Warner, did you want me to do something? I thought we said no.
Okay, if we can, we can continue to move on if you'd rather.
Yes, I think so.
Okay, we'll cover that at another time. Let me ask, I'm sorry, I'm going to close the public comment period and ask, oh, I'm sorry, YouTube, anything on YouTube?
Not on YouTube, but we have a person that wanted to speak.
Oh, okay. Very good.
We, Jay Faith.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Okay, Jay Faith, yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. I want to congratulate the council and their recently. Hello, oh, sorry. Sorry.
I can still hear you.
Okay, thank you. Want to congratulate the council and their recently formed committee of inequity and outcasts for one thing, reuniting, for uniting the community in support of law enforcement and the history of Livermore. Too many people, especially our youth, don't even have a clue as to what it is to live under a totalitarian regime is like. However, in the last few days, we've been given the taste of what it is like when we were notified that our city council and its newest committee has an agenda of creating an environment, a division of division by their desire to identify symbols, artwork, objects, artifacts, et cetera in the Livermore, in Livermore that represent and signify systemic racism as well as symbols, et cetera, that signify equity and inclusion. According, according to their opinions, no longer is free speech and free thought or expression allowed in the city of Livermore without being subject to the thought police. It has been brought to our attention that our city intends to identify, implement actions the city and subgroup can or should take and address the symbols, acknowledge and reduce systemic racism and promote equity and inclusion according to their opinions and taste. Our city has decided to inventory the entire city, not just to those that are city-owned, examples of city property, including the Pride Flag, Cowboy Field, Vineyard Worker Murals, Livermore Seal, Cowboy Sculptures of Families, Children with Eurocentric Features, Ranch Brands, Totem Pole, Examples of Private Property, Confederate Flag, Thin Blue Line Flag, Inclusive Signs. Apparently, the city and this new committee thinks that the Thin Blue Line Flag is a symbol of oppression and systemic racism as it is referred to in its notes from their meeting on November seventeenth, twenty twenty. From the notes, we can see that it is the goal of the new subgroup to reach out and partner with organizations and agencies to begin an effort to re-educate the community according to their way of thinking. When I was in college and my professor had us read The Communist Takeover of America, forty-five declared goals read into the Congressional Record of nineteen sixty-three, Congressional Record Appendix, page A thirty-four through A thirty-five, I remember, remember thinking, wow, this is crazy. This could never happen in America, right? Over the last twenty years, I watched it unfold right before my eyes. I want to congratulate you for accomplishing goal number twenty-two, thirty-two and thirty-eight by forming this council committee. Never in my lifetime did I think George Orwell nineteen eighty-four would play out right before my eyes. But I want to congratulate you and the committee for making fiction come to life. The fact that this council is so arrogant as to think that you are above people in Livermore and feel the need to be the thought police is astounding. How arrogant has your position made you? You sit in your seat and insult people of color by calling them marginalized and have the nerve to say that they're systemic racism when the data doesn't support your propaganda is disgusting. You should be ashamed of yourselves. You soak your egos, touting the goals of this committee as coming from a racist book called My Brother's Keeper, when many who have read that book are insulted by the arrogance of advice coming from a failed community organizer.
Miss Faith, if you could please wrap up your thoughts, please.
I see my time. The committee is threatened by the history of Livermore being primarily families and children with Eurocentric features. And any representation as such is, is you feel a representative of being born of some systemic racism. This indoctrinated Marxist way of thinking seems to be infecting this council as representative by most recent election of Brittany Kick, who supports the Marxist front hate group of BLM.
Excuse me, excuse me, Ms. Faith.
Excuse me.
I asked that everyone has three minutes. You just completed three minutes and plus. So please finish your thoughts. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on. I, there's a couple of other comments in the, in the Q and A. So if we could cover those as well.
Okay, back to the, the Zoom Q and A.
Yes.
And as per our policy, we will read the second of anything where there are two, two were submitted.
Looks like there may just be a natural break. So I would, the Liz M. Yeah. Yeah, uh, it's, uh, to me, it looks like there was a, a natural break that, uh, uh, occurred when they just entered it. So to me, it looks like a, a single stream. So let's just cover both of those.
Absolutely. Okay, this is from Liz M. Are you seriously considering the removal of the totem pole and the statue of the three children? These are not racist.
Okay, I'd like to just, I'd like to speak to that right now. No, we are not. We are not considering removing the totem pole. We're not removing the statue of the three children. Um, and the city count, the city has not decided to do anything at this point. This is merely an, an exercise, uh, to begin a community conversation. So with that, uh, but just to put everyone's mind at ease, we're not taking out the, the totem pole. We're not removing the, uh, the, the circle of children.
Okay, the, the next comment is from Nicole Thomas. I can appreciate the sentiment of an Equity and Inclusion Committee. However, from the beginning of learning of this committee, I've had many concerns of potential negative outcomes, such as increased division, fear, and infringement of free speech. While these topics deserve thoughtful discussion forums, they can become a disastrous slippery slope when there is a greater desire to take recriminative action than there is to truly listen to the whole community. Can we perhaps pause this committee and reevaluate its purpose and objectives? Okay, um, from Robert L.L. said, I could not agree more with Jill here, here. And then, Will and Michelle D., she can have my three minutes.
We'll do that here.
Right. Uh, Travis, are you considering keeping a database of people's addresses who have a thin blue line flag on their property? And from, well, Will and Michelle D., it may be hard to hear, but Ms. Faith's comments are not far off. I wish I didn't agree with her, but I do. And that concludes the comments on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and let me just, I, I'm going to close the public comment period because it looks like we've got all them then, uh, in. But remember that every one of us, I was gonna say, every one of us up here, but we're not up here. We're all at our own individual homes, but everybody that would normally be sitting at the dais, uh, and you will see this later on tonight. Everybody here has sworn to uphold the Constitution of the State of California and the Constitution of the United States. That includes the Bill of Rights, which includes the freedom of expression and freedom of speech. We have all sworn to uphold that, and that's something that, uh, that overrides everything. So just set people's minds at ease. This is a beginning of a community conversation. And as, as I said, you will see later on tonight, you will see the council members and the mayor take that oath of office and the sincerity behind it. So, any further, uh, Mayor-elect Warner?
Yeah, I, I think, um, you know, I, I just want to say I'm, I'm saddened by how things have, uh, been, uh, interpreted. But I wanted, and I want to say a couple of things because I, I know that there's a lot of concern and I want to acknowledge I've heard it. The first thing I want to make very clear, and you've alluded to it, John, in the past, is that you and I have been on this council for nine years. We've been fully supportive of the police. And I, I see no change personally in that thought for myself. And I'm looking forward actually to working with the upcoming council on making sure that the police have the resources and the computer, uh, community support they need to continue, um, their very critical mission of providing for our public safety is something that I very much appreciate. And we will continue on that line. I think, um, what has been pointed out very well, sometimes more stridently as, in addition, but we do need to have the community conversation. We need also the council conversation because I think there are many people speaking on behalf of the council. And actually, the council has not yet spoken on this, other than by our actions in the past. So we do have the Brown Act and no other, you know, the council can't get into this topic now. But I want to say that I'm, I know I have, and I'm very sure everybody on the council has heard of the uproar. And I think that what we need to do is put this on a future council meeting agenda very quickly. And so that the community can see for themselves and what the council actually says for themselves, rather than what's being spun out there in social media as to what we think. And I, in, deep down in my heart, believe that once that conversation occurs, that there will be, you know, people can be assured. But until that time happens, I would just request that people, um, understand that the council has not weighed in on anything. And even the council members on the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee have not weighed in on anything. And it's, uh, I acknowledge that the way it's been dealt with is highly unfortunate because there is, uh, a lot of issues and angst that have been raised, and I'm, I regret that it has been. And I think that we need to work as a community to, um, come to an, an, a mutual understanding and have uh, conversations with ourselves so that everybody, uh, can come together. And I acknowledge, as has been pointed out at the moment, that's not happening, and I regret it. So it, so I'll just leave it at that, that we will, I can assure you, uh, put this on the agenda on a future, future council meeting. And we can, everyone can then hear directly from us as to what the truth of the matter is versus that which is being spun at the moment. So thank you for the opportunity to say that.
Sure, thank you, Mayor-elect. And, uh, so that will actually happen tonight because we're going to have a little bit of business early on in the meeting. Uh, and then later tonight, when your mayor, uh, you can bring this up under matters initiated, and people can actually see how all of this works. Uh, so one thing I'd like to ask you is, there's a question in, uh, uh, the Q and A that, that says, can we have a bigger dialogue and add to the committee members? So right now, how many committee members do we have on the Equity and Inclusion Committee?
So if I, if I may answer that?
Yeah, please.
You know, we broadly asked for members of the, uh, community to, you know, participate. And we're looking for all points of view. And we got fifty people. And we thought we were only going to have eighteen. So we said, let's have everybody because we want as much input as possible. And I think that some people may remember, and it was pointed out by, uh, Councilmember Coomer, to make sure that on, that we have participating here are members of the police force and, of course, and I'm glad to say we have several. So I think that was very, uh, insightful on Councilmember Coomer's part. I'm certainly firmly, you know, I seconded that thought at, at the time. And that's always been the intent. Because what we really need here is everybody who has something to say and think about this, to say it, and to say it respectfully to the people with different points of view. And it was our hope through that process, we could have a conversation rather than shouting at each other. And so we, uh, have had people that, you know, for whatever reason or another, who signed up, who haven't have been able to participate. There have been some that have participated in many of the different kinds of discussions. So right now, uh, we are asking people to submit their application again. But we haven't figured out how to bring new people into an existing conversation. But we absolutely need to do that. And frankly, I'm, from the messaging and things I've seen, we've got a lot more people interested, and I would welcome them to join the conversation because the full spectrum of points of view need to be, uh, heard and understood.
Can, can I jump in at this point? So, first?
Uh, Mr. Red, like, to the city attorney, are, are we, uh, are we stepping into a, an uncomfortable place here?
This conversation, again, the Brown Act allows the council to have brief comments in response to items that are raised during matters initiated. The Brown Act does not provide for an opportunity to have a, a long, uh, debate on, on this item or any item unless it's added to a future agenda.
Right, and we are going to be adding it to a future agenda.
So I, I wanted to clarify a couple of things, and then I, there was a comment in the chat that, uh, regarding, are we creating a database with the addresses? To which I responded, no. And I will continue to say, no, and no. I, I actually want to speak to that because, a, a, a little bit, because one of the things that I have found really disturbing about all of this is the fact that a brainstorming session was so badly taken out of context, and a whole mythology grew up around it. This is part of that mythology. You know, it, it's, it's not real. I'm sorry, but it's a mythology. Um, yeah, so, but, but, so, so that speaks to, to whether we're having a database or not. We are not. However, in, in terms of where the, I, I just wanted to add to, uh, what current Vice Mayor Warner said. Uh, almost not Vice Mayor, almost Mayor, uh, um, Warner. Uh, yeah, I bet. Um, um, which is that we are at a pausing place. We've gone through an initial stage. One of the things that all four of the subgroups intends, has always intended to do is engage the whole community and work on engaging all parts of the community. Clearly, that has happened, um, yeah, uh, a, a, at this moment. Um, and not, you know, I suspect this was always going to happen. It happened to happen now. Um, this is not going to be comfortable. Uh, we hope it will, that it will, we, this will lead to a place where we can have conversations together. I have, uh, something that I will say during my report out, uh, shortly. But I just wanted to make sure that people knew that we are sort of at a stopping point because we've reached the end of the year. We're going to be moving forward. And at that point, with that, with the, the absolute intent is to go forward to include as many people as possible because this is all for all of Livermore.
Okay, so just to reiterate, uh, there are fifty people, five zero, fifty people on the Equity and Inclusion Committee. Uh, and there are representatives from law enforcement on the committee.
And fully, uh, participating. And I'll, I'll just say, uh, I am so happy they are. That they, uh, because what, you know, they're able to convey on a very human terms, uh, who they are, what their job is about, who they're about, what, what they are about. And I'll, I'll also say, forgot to mention this. But, you know, I've lived in Livermore forty-four years and more than that. I think our police force has been really good. And best I can understand and have observed, it's very much appreciated, beloved in our community. And I think, uh, it will continue to be as we as a community work through this. But I would just, a request that everybody who's interested in this, join the effort, join the conversation, and help us, uh, come together as a community.
And, and again, to my point, my father spent over fifty years in law enforcement. Uh, I grew up on a daily basis, living and breathing law enforcement. So, uh, you know where I stand on, uh, supporting our police. And I agree with you, uh, Mayor-elect, that, uh, we have a remarkable police department. And, uh, the purpose, part of this conversation is to make sure that they, that they continue to be the remarkable servants for this community that they are, and they have proven themselves to be.
And, you know, and to give them, you know, ultimately where we're trying to go here, you know, many places, but, uh, to affirm how important and appreciated the police department is, that's one of my personal desired outcomes.
On Nextdoor, the, you see the, the accolades for our police department on, on Nextdoor, and that's, it's heartwarming for me to see.
Right. So I think.
Would, would, would it be a good time to read that letter now? What do you think, Bob?
No.
Vice Mayor Warner?
But I don't, I don't think so. I think that, uh, I think that what we need to do is everybody who's interested in participating here, uh, join the conversation and in a respectful way, and that we can, uh, articulate our goals. I think, I, I forget who it was who mentioned it. Don't have a name here, but the idea is to make sure that we have thought about what we're doing here. And I think that, uh, that's why I suggest that we need to talk about this at a council level in compliance with the Brown Act. And in between now, in the time we can set that council meeting up, I would encourage the community to reach out to us. I mean, they have, and to continue the conversation. So I think at this point, my understanding, and I don't have, you know, I've only been on this kind of stuff for ten years. And I'm not going to pretend to know all the ins and outs, but my belief is we are best off at this point to let everybody know we're going to put this on a council meeting, and we will go through this in a very, uh, respectful, thorough way, and everybody will have a chance to see how each of us thinks about this.
Yeah, I imagine that's probably going to be in the very near future, like, uh, maybe next month. But that's going to be something that we'll see, uh, uh, coming to, uh, at this evening's meeting at the Matters Initiated.
Yeah, so I hope people understand that, that we move very slowly and with under, with procedures. And that, uh, I personally, and, and, you know, committed to making sure that we, that we do this in a very good way, and that there will be good outcomes, but and as I say, I regret that it got screwed up, frankly, but that wasn't the intent, and we will, if people can join us in the conversation, we can get to the right outcomes, I believe.
Very good. Okay, well, with that, uh, the public comment period has been closed, citizens forum. Uh, and when we move on to the consent calendar, consent calendar items are typically routine in nature. Uh, usually the consent calendar is passed on a single motion. Uh, does anyone wish to remove an item for discussion from the consent calendar? Seeing none, uh, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'd make it one last motion here. What the heck?
Very good. Uh, motion made by Councilmember Coomer?
You should let him second it too, then.
Well, you know, I'll second it because it's going to be mild. Well, I guess we still have the, the canvas. So that's good. Okay, so I'll second. So we're both on it. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe?
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer?
Hi.
Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner?
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn?
Bye. Okay, um, we have, uh, the consent calendar passage unanimously. Uh, we have no, uh, public hearings. Uh, and now under matters for consideration, uh, we have a resolution accepting the canvas of votes for the November third, twenty twenty general municipal election and recognition of outgoing council members. So, uh, staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm your city clerk, Marie Weber. On November third of this year, general municipal election was held in Livermore to elect a mayor and two council members representing districts three and four. Livermore coordinates with Alameda County to conduct local elections, and the registrar voters has certified the election results and provided an official canvas. The elections code requires a city elections official to certify the election results to the governing body. Based on votes cast for mayor and council members, the following persons were elected to the following offices. Bob Warner for mayor at a two-year term, Brittany Kick as council member district three for a four-year term, Robert Carling for council member for district four for a four-year term. Staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution accepting the canvas of votes as certified by Alameda County registrar voters, and I'm available for questions.
Okay, any questions? Okay, I'm going to, uh, open the public comment period. Uh, is there any public comment? Okay, I guess I'm going to close the public comment here, here, comment, uh, period, uh. So what happens if I don't call for a vote? So, well, with that, I is there a motion?
I believe we have some hands raised.
Oh, I didn't. I didn't see any. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't see any hands raised. Okay, there we are. We have Laura Frerking, Dave Halbert. Oh, and we also have Lisa Traumovich, and she will probably read hers. And I see Steve Lanza as well. I wasn't over in the attendees. So Laura Frerking?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm just, I guess I'm in the wrong part of this meeting, but I wanted to know how we sign up to be a part of the upcoming committee meeting on the ENI.
Okay, that can be, you can go onto the city website, and you can pull up, we've got a link to the Equity and Inclusion Committee. So I'll make sure that that's prominently displayed, and that you can just go to the city website, click on that, and there'll be information on how you can participate.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's see, moving on to David Halbert, Steve Lanza, Rozie Hosni.
Well, Mayor Marshawn, my good friend, the time has come.
Supervisor Supervisor Halbert.
Hey, John, I just couldn't let this time pass without taking the time. Well, first of all, let me start by saying also, congratulations to the retirement Bob Coomer. Also, congratulations to those that have won election, Bob Carling, Brittany Kick, Bob Warner, you're going to make a wonderful mayor. But since my time is ticking away here, I have to say wonderful congratulations to Mayor Marshawn for his hard-earned retirement. I use air quotes because I know John is not going too far away from us. But I would like to congratulate you, John, on your decades-long distinguished career of tireless and selfless public service. Your years as mayor preceded by council and many other committees. Serving with you regionally, I have seen, I have to say, Livermore was truly blessed to have you at the helm. You led in a professional way, sharing your knowledge with everyone around you. As comments echoed by our state senator and our supervisor, outgoing Supervisor Hagerty. People like that give their respect to those that earn it, and boy, you have earned it. This valley is turning over. Every single mayor in the valley will be new this year. And they, as a group, will be missed, but you, sir, will be sorely missed at the helm. Bob Warner, you have big shoes to fill, and I know you're going to do a great job. But Mayor Marshawn, it's been a pleasure serving with you. I have learned so much from you. I consider you a mentor, a friend, and just a wonderful partner in the leadership here in the Tri Valley. A leadership that we have forged together in friendship. Thank you for all that you've done for the city of Livermore, and again, me personally. I want to end just by saying, I have to thank Sue for sharing you with us for so many years. She is amazing. I wish you both successful and wonderful, again, I use air quote, retirement. I look forward to seeing you around and working with you ongoing as I embark on my next journey. Thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Supervisor Halbert, thank you so much for your kind words. It truly has been an honor and a privilege to work with you. Our trips to Washington DC, working with the US Conference of Mayors, and really working for the people here in this region. So thank you for your service. You also have served this region for decades, and it looks like you're going to be serving it long into the future. So I look forward to the continuing great work that you're going to be doing. And thank you for your all of your support for the for Livermore and for the region. So best wishes to you as well. And.
Thank you.
And bless your wife as well, because it's not easy. When she, I've talked to her on a number of occasions, recognizing what she's going through. And I certainly appreciate the support that she's giving you because you don't come into this this job alone.
Amen. You're right, John. Amen. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Take care. All right, moving on to the president of Innovation Tri Valley, Steve Lanza.
Let's see, did I unmute correctly then?
Yes, you did. I can I can hear you right now.
Yeah, so thank you. For those who don't know, Innovation Tri Valley is a collaborative industry education, our national labs. But heavily with our our local governments, all focused on creating a thriving economy and a great quality of life. And I give that full lead-in because it gives you a good feeling about what I see Mayor Marshawn has spent his time, at least in the almost five years with Innovation Tri Valley these days. And I think back to when I first met, and I think back to all of the things we worked on over these five years. And what we've worked on just recently with the all of the transportation issues and housing issues and and the challenges that have come up in the city. And I'm a Livermore resident also, by the way. And I appreciate all of the hard work and dedication that have gone into making our city the incredible place it is. And I think that, John, you've done this because you truly believe this is an incredible place to live and wake up every morning trying to figure out how to make sure it stays an incredible place to live. And for that, I greatly appreciate it, whether it was Innovation Tri Valley or even the the tours and the questions and the and the curiosity of what goes on at Land Research and and what do we need to do in the city to go and continue to help support this Fortune 300 corporation, which has grown tremendously in that location, in part because of the great support the city gave. And I just wanted to personally thank you. Thank you for all of your dedication and time that you've given towards us. Bob Coomer, I we have not met, but I wish you the best and recognize all the hard work you've done on the city council. And then Bob Warner, look forward to spending time with you as we go forward with the the transition that's to come. So. Oh, and I do have to do one throughout also to Brittany because she is also Cal Poly alum. And welcome her to the city council. So thank you again from Innovation Tri Valley. And for all of your hard work and dedication, you make this a great place to work and live.
Thank you.
Well, Steve, thank you. And recognizing that Councilmember Carling was also one of the founding members of Innovation Tri Valley. I remember those meetings at Los Pecinos College, so we were sort of moved around. So another alumnus from Innovation Tri Valley, and a lot of those folks that that have been working on this. But what a powerhouse, Innovation Tri Valley. It's very exciting to see that collaboration coming together. So thank you again for those kind words, Steve. Rozie Hosni, Kristi Wang, and Andy McElroy.
Yes, Mayor Marshawn, those are some pretty big statements to come after, so I'm going to try to keep it short and brief. Not sure I can compare it to Dave Halbert or anybody from Innovation Tri Valley. But I'd like to thank you personally on behalf of myself, as well as Joya Yoga. You were the first mayor in Tri Valley, in the Tri Valley, actually, to welcome our studios and welcome our operation Joya in 2014, and provided us with a home through which we've grown to five locations throughout the whole East Bay. Thank you for your service and thank you for being there for us. I still remember when you came and gave speeches at our anniversary parties. So it was really a memorable experience for us and our members. And really cool that you participated in in making sure that Livermore is fit, well, and healthy. And I thought it was an awesome opportunity to to engage with you. Best of luck on your retirement, and we hope that you come take some classes, yoga classes, fitness classes, outdoors, indoors, whenever it's allowed, and whenever you're able to, you know, come through. And congratulations, sir, and on behalf of Joya, namaste. And then Mayor-elect Bob Warner, sir, steady as she goes, and Godspeed. Thank you all.
Namaste as well. And my older son is a big yoga fan, so quite a practitioner himself. So we may see, well, we may well see you out there. But Rozie, thank you so much for your kind words. Kristi Wong, Andy McElroy, and Nadine Horner. Let's see. I think we, let's see, Rozie, we're done. Kristi, Kristi Wong?
I'm sorry, Mayor, it says that Kristi Wang is using an older version of Zoom, and we're unable to unmute her.
Oops. So maybe she could type her comments in under the Q and A.
I think I might be okay now. Can you hear me?
Okay, okay, yes, we can. This is Kristi.
Yes, hi.
Hi there. There you are.
Yeah, there I am. I just wanted to thank Councilmember Coomer for his service to Livermore. I really appreciate your time on council, and you're always someone who really is more of an ambassador to Livermore, really. But always very responsive and easy to talk to and someone I could just call up. Mayor Marshawn, do you've been on council a year longer than I've lived in Livermore? So it's going to be very personally strange for me to not see you there. You were someone I saw everywhere around town. I'd see you at the supermarket and at the movie theater. And you were always happy to talk to people. I really think of you as the people's mayor, somebody who seemed to just really enjoy walking around town, talking to people, hearing whatever concerns and ideas we had. And in the past two years that we've worked together on the youth vaping issue. And, you know, even at times when our conversations became what I think Vice Mayor Warner would always call spirited. You know, I we always enjoyed working with you and felt like you were somebody we could work with who really cared about our kids and our community. And we were working together to improve the city. And so I'm going to really miss you and appreciate you, but I know this won't be the last we see of you.
Well, Kristi, it was great working with you on the anti-vaping initiatives, and I appreciated the the way that the young people came together to support that. And I think that really made the difference, that they came together, educated the council about how this was important, not only to the community, but to the students themselves. So thank you for taking the lead on that and for bringing that to fruition. Thank you.
And Kristi, thank you so much. I really appreciate your kind comments. And yeah, I look forward to hearing more out of, once you get, once you're sworn in.
Congratulations as well. Andy McElroy from Sandia National Laboratories, Nadine Horner, and Dr. Bowers.
Mayor Marshawn, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
It's a pleasure tonight to recognize all the service you've provided to the city on behalf of Sandia National Laboratories and our lab director, James Perry, who unfortunately couldn't be with us tonight. You've been just a tireless supporter of both labs, both Sandia and Lawrence Livermore here in the city. And as a chemist, you brought a keen understanding of the importance of the work that we do. And as a fellow chemist, I found that particularly heartwarming. I think I first met you around the Livermore Valley Open Campus Stand Up, which at the time, Bob Carling was my boss, and we were working on that with you together. So it's a small world. You've done a tremendous amount, speaking to the labs both locally and nationally, and we deeply appreciate that. We also appreciate all the work that you've done, continuing to develop the city of Livermore as just a first-rate, attractive place to live and work. And that's so important for us these days as we try to compete for top talent. And, you know, very competitive landscape, having such a terrific city to bring people to makes a huge difference. And that that is a big contribution to the labs here. And so I just want to briefly thank you here. And I regret that we're not in person because if we were, I would shake your hand and follow the tradition of our national security community and pass you a coin commemorating your connection to Sandia Labs here in California. Since I can't do that in person, the coin will be in the mail to you shortly. So thank you for everything you've done. Have a fabulous retirement, and I look forward to seeing you in Lowe's again soon.
Working on those projects. Andy, thank you so much. It really has been a privilege to have worked with you and and the laboratories, because you're going back to Washington, speaking on behalf of the laboratories to the National Nuclear Security Administration. And recognizing that by creating that wonderful quality of life here, people are attracted to to Livermore, not only for the quality of life, but also because of the fact that they can do work here in Livermore that can be done nowhere else in the world. And and that's really a hallmark of the great work that is being done here in Livermore by the laboratories. I mean, the most difficult problems in the world come to Livermore to be solved, and that's solved by our laboratories. So Andy, thank you so much, and we'll see you in Lowe's and look forward to seeing you when we come out the other side of COVID.
See you then.
Thank you. Nadine Horner, Kelly Bowers, and Chris Chandler.
Mayor Marshawn.
Yes.
I feel honored to speak tonight on behalf of Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory. I'm starting my comments with a quote from the lab director, Bill Goldstein, at the city's recent groundbreaking of Livermorean Plaza. As he stated, Mayor Marshawn, you have personally been dedicated in making Livermorean Plaza a reality. It is your leadership that made it happen. I congratulate and thank you for the vision and commitment you have shown in bringing this about and throughout your extensive career of public service. Our lab director and the mayor first started to get to know one another when they both went to Russia for the naming of Livermorean. It was from this trip, a deep understanding of the mayor's desire to represent the city of Livermore was evident. The mayor shows passion for everything science and has always made a point of attending important visits with important visitors to the lab. We could always expect John to bring to the conversation his intellect, initiative, imagination, dedication, and his enthusiasm. John, we hope you realize how happy and lucky we have felt for you serving as our mayor. You have been an inspiration to many, but especially your fellow scientists. You have given everything to the city of Livermore, and we want you to know how much we appreciate and admire you. In summary, your dedication to Livermore has been a long and successful one, full of triumphs and achievements. You have given so much to our community, and you have truly earned the right to feel proud of all you have accomplished. Thank you for your years of service.
Wow. Thank you so much, Nadine. Truly, the work that I've been able to do with the laboratories has has been a high point of my career. And I will tell you, being in Moscow, having been a chemist and being able to speak to the International Union of Pure and Applied Chemistry, to name an element after my city, and to be part of an honor that only six other cities in the world, actually, only six cities in the world, share that was truly the highlight of my career as a chemist. And I have you to thank for that. You organized that. And what an amazing collaboration this has been. I'm so proud to have represented the laboratories. And as I said before, the most difficult problems come to Livermore to be solved, where people can do work that can be done nowhere else in the world. So thank you for your kind words. This has been truly a wonderful collaboration. And thank you so much for your part in that, because you played a big role in that, and I recognize that. So thank you. Dr. Kelly Bowers from Livermore Unified School District, and Chris Chandler.
So good evening. On behalf of our Board of Trustees, our thirteen thousand five hundred students and fifteen hundred employees, I would first like to congratulate Councilmember Klick, and I'm so excited. I can't wait to meet you. And we know great things are in store with you as a leader. And I'm so excited. I can't wait to meet you and we know great things are in store with you as a leader. I also want to offer my deep and heartfelt thanks to Councilmember Bob Coomer. You are an incredible leader with a heart of gold and you will be really missed. And then I'd like to take a little more time, trying to keep within the three minutes, to thank and acknowledge Honorable Mayor John Marshawn for his many years of public service and in particular, his ongoing support of public education in our school district. We never take your support for granted. Over these many years, I was so fortunate to have served side by side with you, Mayor Marshawn, on civic boards, the Chamber of Commerce, the Livermore Cultural Arts Council, the Tri-Valley Anti-Poverty Coalition, and Innovation Tri-Valley. And together, our agencies have partnered in so many positive ways. Things like the Summer Reading Program, the Amgen Bike Race, Youth in Government, Community Service Day, Livermoreum Day, The Taste of Downtown, Holiday Sites and Sounds, throwing out the first pitch at the Little League World Series, and most recently, Mask Up Livermore Campaign and Unity Day. What's amazing and remarkable about Mayor Marshawn, well, there are many things, but one of the things particularly remarkable is that whenever our students or I, on their behalf, reached out to Mayor Marshawn with any concerns, whether we were combating the vaping epidemic, improving campus security, trying to work on traffic safety near our campuses, or tackling the stigma of mental health, supporting the traditionally underserved, Mayor Marshawn never shied away. He's always made himself available to meet, served on panels, took the uncomfortable questions, came into classroom forums, and took direct action to arrive at solutions. He was always there to read to our kiddos in the classroom, to pat the dogs on their head at the events, celebrate our students' accomplishments, and make sure our artwork, our student adorned our city bus stops. Mr. Mayor, you've been a tireless advocate for all things Livermore. You've been a consistent, wonderful champion for our youth. So for all of this and more, we're grateful, we're fortunate, we're blessed, we're indebted. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your leadership. You've boosted the quality of all of our lives as mayor. And thanks to you, the future of our children is so much brighter. Please enjoy your well-deserved retirement with Sue and your family. And hopefully, once the pandemic is over, Rob and I will actually have time to hang out and get together with you both. You will definitely be missed, but your legacy and your impact lives on. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
Dr. Bowers, thank you so much. And I also look forward to one of these getting back days, getting back out there and enjoying the taste of downtown together. That's a lot of fun. But you do a wonderful job. The young people in our schools are just so involved, the vaping effort, reading in the schools for the Dr. Sue's birthday. Those are all things that are just an absolute joy and being able to, as I've been clearing out my office, I have found a couple of plaques that I've gotten from students that remembered that because I was in Susan's classroom when she was teaching, that they are now scientists because they were inspired because someone took the time to show them the excitement of science. And that's really gratifying because that's what we all hope to do, is to inspire other people. And to, it was always a joy for me. And it was great working with the young people and seeing their eyes light up when they saw that, yes, science is exciting and knowledge is exciting. And to see them go on and succeed with the foundation that they got from the Lawrence, from the Livermore Joint Unified School District. So thank you for all of your great work.
Well, thank you. But this is about you and we just want to make sure that you know what an incredible role model you are for our team.
Well, thank you. I can't do this by myself. I've got to have other people that help. So thank you. Chris Chandler from the Wine Growers Association.
Mayor Marshawn, on behalf of the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association, first of all, I just want to thank the entire city council. Also thank Councilmember Coomer and wish you well. Quick congratulations for the incoming Mayor Bob Warner. And then just offer a special thanks to you, Mayor Marshawn. You've been a tremendous, tremendous advocate on behalf of Livermore Valley Wine Country. You have been a fantastic mayor. You, you lead with passion, dedication, and heart. And it has been an absolute pleasure working with you these many years. And I, I just wish you only the best and thank you.
Well, thank you. And again, how can you not support a wine region? I mean, this is just, you guys have taken the Livermore Wine Region and really made it into something very, very special. So it's, it's been a lot of fun to support the wine growers. And as I used to say, when I was the Vice Mayor, when you have 50 wineries in Livermore, being the mayor of vice is a great gig. So that was always a joy and always a pleasure to represent this wonderful region. So and Chris, thank you so much. You've really been one of the leaders in the region when it comes to our Wine Growers Association. And I always appreciated being included on the, a lot of the initiatives that you undertook. So thank you for including me and wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, seeing no further comments from the public.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. We have Q and A from you, from Zoom. Yes, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Excuse me. This comment was from Lisa Tramovich and I believe Lisa might want to speak in person. And Lisa, if you do, please use the raise hand comment. She also asked a question. So I'm going to give her a second to do that. And then we also have a comment from Laura Matucci. It says, "Happy holidays and good luck." And so Lisa's comment, so I will close this out.
Now, can I see Lisa Tramovich is on mute?
Now I'm not.
Oh, there you are. You're back. Okay, I see the little slash is over. Okay. Good to see you, Lisa.
You too. First, I just want to say a hearty welcome to Brittany Kick and welcome back to Bob Carling. We look forward to working with you. And on behalf of Shakespeare's Associates Board of Directors and Staff, thank you, Mayor John Marshawn and Councilwoman Bob Coomer for your years of service. The collaborations that you have all engaged in to put the quality and quality of life for our region is greatly appreciated and I hope you feel that tonight. Each of your achievements form a lasting legacy for our community in physical improvements and things like parks, the creation of our Gem of a Downtown, and support for our varied cultural landscape and more. But in addition, you've modeled collaboration between citizens and its leaders that I trust we will be able to continue. I hear stories of other cities where this collaboration is not the norm. And we appreciate how lucky we are to have benefited from your leadership. And we look forward to partnering with council and staff in the years to come under the leadership of Bob Warner. But we will miss you. We will keep in touch and thank you, Councilwoman Coomer and Mayor John Marshawn.
Thank you so much. Bob?
Lisa, thank you so much again. It's been a pleasure, you know, listening to everybody, quite honestly, too. You know, so many people to thank. Everyone, you know, the entire city of Livermore, the residents who let me know one way or another, whether we're on the right track. And, and as well as all staff members, top to bottom, who just, you know, we knew what we were doing going in because of all the hard work done by these, these staff members, all of them. And it has been a pleasure. It's been fun. Mr. Mayor, it's been a great, great time working with you and seeing you since 2005, even before I got on LARPD. You know, there you go. You were out there even then and we figured, you know, we both like to get out in public and talk to people and I think it was a great fit for me as well. So thank you and to my colleagues, Councilmember Carling, the Mayor-elect Warner and Councilmember Monroe. This is, it's been a real, real honor to work with you and a pleasure to work with you on everything we've been doing. Thank you.
Again, thank you all for all the very touching comments that this is a labor of love that we do. And that's, we're certainly, it's because we love this community. And what I would like to do first is I would like to present this proclamation from the city of Livermore honoring Councilmember Bob Coomer. And whereas Bob Coomer was born in Oakland, California, raised in Piedmont, where he graduated from Piedmont High School in 19... And after graduation, he attended Merritt Junior College and studied Administration of Justice. He served as Reserve Officer with the Oakland Police Department until 1978 and spent the bulk of his professional career at Wells Fargo Bank, where in 1990, he met his future wife Gina while discussing business-related matters over the phone. They met face to face for the first time in 1994 and were married in 1995. And whereas a native of Piedmont, Bob spent much of his childhood outdoors in nature, exploring the trails of Tilden and Redwood Regional Parks. In 2007, Bob kept off an incredible backpack trip to the summit of California's third highest peak, the 14,250-foot White Mountain in Mono County. The culmination of his experiences in extreme settings earned Bob election to the California Outdoors 2007 Hall of Fame. Bob was recognized by the Bush Administration with a President's Council on Physical Fitness Community Leadership Award in 2008. And in 2013, the Wounded Warriors Foundation voted Bob a Spirit Award for Leadership in the Community. An avid outdoor adventurer, Bob's inspirational personal story of strength and perseverance is chronicled in the 2018 documentary Four Wheel Bob. And whereas Bob was a member of the East Bay Regional Parks District Parks Advisory Committee from 2008 to 2016, and was elected to the Livermore Area Recreation and Park District in 2010. In 2016, he was elected to the City Council. And whereas during his tenure on the council, Councilmember Coomer was actively engaged with residents and worked thoughtlessly and tirelessly for the benefit of the community. He was instrumental in creating the community consensus to build the new Civic Center Meeting Hall and Emergency Operations Center and supported Measure P, which ultimately resulted in moving ahead with the approved downtown plan. Now therefore, the City Council, the city of Livermore, honors Bob Coomer for his service and contributions to the Livermore community and wishes him well in the future as he enjoys hiking, fishing, and spending time with his wife Gina. And I will get this proclamation to you, Bob. Thank you so much. It's been, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you, John. I'm humbled.
And the, excuse me, can the rest of us say some things at this point?
Absolutely.
Hey, my hand was up first.
Go ahead.
I will. So I wanted to speak to Councilmember Coomer first. He and I, I think are likely fairly far apart politically and I want to mention that in particular because it's particularly with the start of this meeting. One of the things that distinguishes the way that I believe he and I both approached the city is it's with the city's best interests at heart. And in my working with him, we come from very, we worked on interviewing advisory bodies together in particular. What's really impressed me is that we come from very different places and yet when push comes, when we have to come to make the decision, we make virtually the same decision. It's been very little discussion. And why is that? It's because neither of us puts ideology above the best interests of Livermore. Neither of us puts, you know, what, well, I guess that's enough. We both have the best interests at heart and we both look at the people before us and the decisions we've made have been good. It has been a real education for me. I think together we make a real lesson for this city going forward. So I want to thank you for that. You've taught me a great deal about how to work together. Thank you so much. Mayor Marshawn, you have been an inspiration for a very long time. I believe, was it Kristy Wong who said you're the ambassador for Livermore? I believe, I believe I would say you're just Mr. Livermore. That's, that's, that's it. Going forward, that's, that's, that's who you are. And your engagement with people, with ideas, your passion for making things right and getting them done truly inspired me to become involved. So for better or for worse, half them up here is largely in part due to you.
It's my fault. Okay.
Exactly, exactly. Between you and the incoming mayor, you know, the city's in big trouble. Thank you so much and I wish you a, you leave us with wonderful things to take care of and build on. And I wish you a wonderful, you and Sue did a wonderful retirement.
Well, thank you so much.
So I should interject at this point, just to make sure people know there are more plaques and proclamations to come for John and we're dealing with Bob at the moment, just to make sure.
Yes. So look at Bob covered here.
Oops, sorry.
Oh, no, not at all. No, not at all. Not at all. Councilmember Carling. We're talking Bob here.
Yes, I'm, the other Bob C. So he and I ran at the same time for our first term at City Council in 2016 against some incumbents. And I'm not sure that people gave either of us much chance and maybe they couldn't decide which Bob C they wanted to vote for. So they voted for both Bob Cs. But we won in 2016 and I think from early on, I appreciated Bob Coomer's getting to the nub of an issue. And I've always appreciated the comments he had to say because I think they're always on point and without a lot of extraneous, unnecessary words at times. But I appreciate your dedication to the city and you were far better than I at reaching out to the community and you know, being present downtown and interacting with folks on a regular basis. So I appreciate that. Best of luck to you and Gina moving forward. I know you've got some challenges ahead and I'm sure that you both together will overcome them and come out better on the other side. So it's been a pleasure. First two years of my service, I sat next to you and it was always wonderful to have that partnership with you early on in my career on council. So best of luck to you and Gina moving forward.
Thanks, Bob. The pleasure has been mine. Hundred percent.
Thank you.
So is it my turn now?
Yes.
Oh, good. So Bob, I've really appreciated being able to work with you in the past four years. And I didn't know you before that, although we did, I don't know if you remember, we would see each other at the club working out. I don't know if you remember that or not, but I certainly noted your energy and drive. And I think that's what I really appreciated on the council here. And it was pointed out earlier, you've, you haven't said very, a whole lot. I mean, most of us have occupied much more of the airtime. But when you do have spoken, it's been very insightful and very succinct and, and actually drove a lot of the decisions at times. So I very much appreciated being able to work with you. And I'm going to miss you. I really am. And I wish you the best of the luck going forward. And I've let other people know, Bob has graciously offered in his retirement to provide me the advice that we all know I'll need. So thank you for that.
Yeah, it's funny. I hear that twice. The fact is, I don't like talking too much. If I've got something to say, I'll say it. You know, and besides, when I'm writing, I get paid by the word. So it, I write far more words than I speak than that. Thank you for your insights and your, your observations. I really appreciate it. It's been a great, great working with you and I will continue to hopefully.
Yes. So I, so is it my turn now?
No, not quite yet.
Yeah, not quite yet. Okay.
Not quite yet because you are also leaving office.
Oh, right, yeah.
Mayor-elect Warner. And so it has been a great honor and a privilege to have worked with everybody and I'll get into that in a moment. But what I'd like to do is But what I'd like to do is, uh, acknowledge that, uh, you know, as people know, that I can only talk to one other person, uh, on the council because of the Brown Act. And, and normally that person is the vice mayor. So whether it's strategy or we're talking about, uh, the upcoming meeting, I rely upon the vice mayor for, uh, bouncing ideas off, for working out strategies. And Mayor Werner, or Vice Mayor-elect Werner, there we go, really was, uh, instrumental in, uh, a lot of the strategies and, and working together in this last year. I mean, uh, what a phenomenal wingman, uh, to have, to have helped me out, with Measure P, to making sure that we were able to, uh, fulfill the overwhelming will of the voters to ensure that the approved plan continued to move ahead. That was a, that was a battle, uh, to get through. And the overwhelming will of the voters won out. And, but then we, we would, I don't think we really had that success were it not been for the strategic, um, and, and doggedness, uh, of the vice mayor. So I have a, uh, a plaque here, uh, recognizing my gratitude for your service as the vice mayor. And I will, will get this to you as well. You can, uh, put it up in your new office. And, uh, the, uh, we also, um, well, what a great ride this has been. It's been a tremendous honor to have served the last nine years as mayor. Uh, and my sincere thanks to all of you who have entrusted me, uh, as, as the mayor in the city. Uh, as, as has been pointed out, we've accomplished a tremendous amount in these last nine years. Stockman's Park, uh, a vision that, uh, fifty-eight years ago was, was, uh, originally made, and it was, it was Vice Mayor Werner that brought all the partners together to make that happen. We've, uh, built, we built a new fire station. And because of the, uh, the determination and the will of this council, we were able to build a new council chamber and emergency operations center. And those are going to continue to serve this community for generations. We added fifty-seven new pieces of public art, uh, which were acquired at no public expense. We were able to work with, I, I was able to work with remarkable people. The entire city staff, all of you, the council members, the city advisory committees, all with the support of both the citizens of Livermore. And we work together for the good of our community. My thanks, as I mentioned, uh, to Mayor-elect Bob Werner. Uh, the city is absolutely in good hands. Thanks as well to council member, uh, Carling, council member Coomer, uh, council member Trish Monroe, uh, and welcome to new council member Brittany Kick. Uh, the, uh, we weren't able, we weren't able to have the Community Service Day, but I look forward to many more of those where thousands of people have come together to serve this community. Remember, our city was named for Robert Livermore, who was known throughout the region for his kindness and his generosity. And I firmly believe that that spirit continues to live on in the DNA of this community. And it is my sincere hope that the council and the members of our community can continue to work together for the common good. And remember that people can disagree without being disagreeable. In closing, I'm, I'm thankful for the remarkable people with whom I've been able to work. And that's what I'm gonna miss the most, is the people. I'm going to miss the hugs and the handshakes that are usually associated with the goodbyes. And I'm gonna miss the opportunity to personally thank each one of those people, uh, that I've been able to serve with. So with that, uh, thank you all. I have been blessed to work, uh, in an extraordinary city, uh, with extraordinary people, uh, right here in Livermore. So, so thank you all. And, and before I might hand over the meeting, I'd like to present to Mayor-elect Werner, the ceremonial gavel. This is the perpetual gavel. It has engraved in it the names of all of the elected mayors, uh, of the city of Livermore. And, uh, your name, uh, is engraved on this gavel as well. So this gavel will continue to be passed down from mayor to mayor. And, uh, uh, it is with this that I officially hand over the reins to you, uh, as you move ahead to take on the oath of office and wish you all of the best. And I have every faith that you are going to do a remarkable job, uh, with this city. So thank you all and best, best of luck and best wishes to all of you.
Okay. Well, thank you for that.
Take it away, Bob.
Well, but we're not done to the oath of office yet. We're definitely not done with the, uh, proclamations, because we have a few. So, uh, what I want to start with is we have a proclamation for you, John. And I think you can get the point that this isn't a normal-sized one, but given everything you've done. So the first thing, this is really wonderful in just the size. So, but I will take a moment and, uh, read what's on it, if I may. So here it is.
A lot was probably covered by, uh, by Supervisor Hagerty. So if there's duplication, you could probably skip over some of it if you want.
Well, I don't know that I necessarily want to if people will bear with me because.
Well, that's beautiful.
Because you've, um, done a lot, and I just want to wrap this up, um, right. And I think, um, you know, you've done a superb job over the years on the, uh, on doing the, uh, the proclamation. So, so this is a, um, proclamation, the city of Livermore honoring Mayor John Marchand, December fourteenth, twenty twenty. And let me just do this. Uh, so whereas John Marchand was born and raised in Hayward, California, where John's interest in public service was inspired by his father, Police Chief Claude Frenchie Marchand, who dedicated his life to law enforcement. In nineteen sixty-nine, John began working for the city of Hayward, first as a library page and later as a lab technician for the water reclamation plant. Always an active thespian, John was a member of the Cats and Jammer Theater Company, where he met Sue McLennan, his future wife, when they were cast together in the play Cinderella. So in John, in, in nineteen seventy-eight, John and Sue were married, and in eighty-five, they moved to Livermore. I think this is pretty cool. There you go, the prince and princesses, right? That's fantastic. And they moved to Livermore where their sons, Dave and Steve, were born and raised and where Sue worked as a teacher for the Livermore Valley Joint Unified School District. And whereas in nineteen seventy-six, after graduating with a degree in biological science from CSU Hayward, John taught, uh, estrian ecology at the Point Millot Marine Lab in Richmond. In nineteen eighty-two, he was hired at the Alameda County Water District, where he advanced to senior water quality chemist. He worked at the district for over thirty years, ensuring the safety of drinking water and was nationally recognized as an expert for troubleshooting water quality problems. And I think as we all know, John is an expert in water and has really helped in a lot of right-of-ways over the years. So I'll continue with the proclamation. So John was elected to the Zone Seven Water Agency Board of Directors in nineteen ninety, serving for over fifteen years, including two terms as chair. During his tenure, the district was recognized as one of the top ten water utilities in the nation for improvements to water quality and reliability. And whereas John was appointed to the Livermore General Plan Review Committee in two thousand and four, and was a founding member, uh, member of the Livermore Commission for the Arts. He was inspired to run for council because of a threat to the urban growth boundary and his desire to keep the community a great place to live. In two thousand and five, he was elected to the city council, serving as vice mayor for two years and acting mayor for one year. In two thousand and eleven, John was elected mayor of Livermore. And whereas John's dedication to improving water quality carried over into his entire tenure on the council, he participated at the groundbreaking of both Zone Seven ozone facilities after proposing ozone twenty-seven years before.
But why rush?
Yeah, he worked with the U.S. Conference of Mayors to collaborate with Congress to pass the Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act. And in two thousand and sixteen, during the worst drought in California's history, kept Lizzie Fountain on for the community's children while still reducing water consumption by over forty percent. In two thousand and twelve, Mayor Marchand, alongside Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory Representatives, traveled to Russia to speak at the International colloquium of the International Union of Pure and Applied Chemistry, to name element one sixteen, Livermoreum, after the city, one of only six cities in the world to have an element named after it and to have their name appear on the periodic table of elements. In recognition, he dedicated Livermoreum Plaza, declaring May thirtieth as Livermoreum Day. And whereas always committed to improving the quality of life for Livermore residents, John helped establish a public art fee requirement on all new construction, implemented the Utility Box mural program, approved retiring the debt on the Bankhead Theater, and added fifty-seven pieces of public art. He created the Glad to Be in Livermore Graffiti and Litter Abatement Daily Initiative, enlisting thirty-five graffiti fighters and was often spotted in the community picking up litter and cleaning graffiti with the assistance of his four-legged companion, Yatsby. In May, in two thousand and sixteen, Mayor Marchand was recognized by Stop Urban Blight International as Graffiti Fighter of the Year. To promote the impact, uh, impact individuals can have to improve their community, John worked with the city staff department with the LDS Church to create the Livermore Community Service Day, which has grown from over four hundred to over a thousand volunteers with over a dozen churches. In the downtown, he opened Veterans Way in Stockman's Park and approved the Livermore Downtown Plan, which Livermore Shakespeare, with the Livermore, uh, Shakespeare Black Box Theater, Quest Science Center, and a boutique hotel next to the Bankhead Theater. And whereas, under Mayor Marchand's leadership, the city moved and restored the beloved historic train depot and completed construction of the premium outlets, fire station number nine, airport administration building, and civic center meeting hall, which replaced the thirty-year-old Triple Y temporary trailer. In two thousand and nineteen, he dedicated the William Mendehall Community Meeting Room and Emergency Operations Center to commemorate the hundred-and-fifty anniversary of the founding of Livermore and the council chamber in honor of John Shirley, a former Livermore mayor and decorated World War II veterans. Now therefore, the city council, the city of Livermore, honors John Marchand for his fifteen years of service to the city, his leadership and dedication and commitment to Livermore will serve an example for the city's future leaders. So there we have it. So the, uh, I just want to say, John, that this is, um, it's been an incredible run. I, you've been a great friend and colleague. I'm gonna miss working with you. And the, um, and again, you know, I'm looking to continue our, our relationship. But I have, with this, um, uh, proclamation, so we have, we have the proclamation. So I, we got that and we'll get it to you. But just like on those late-night TV commercials, there's more. So, uh, if I could have, want to say is, I just read that proclamation. And, and of course, it's larger than life because John is in so many ways. But what we also have here is a scroll. Now I don't have any centurions for let me unravel it. But this then contains a list of all your accomplishments. And I would like to say that we, uh, were fortunate enough, Marianne Lobo was fortunate enough to enlist your wife to inscribe it. So thank you. And that was a lot of effort. It's nicely done calligraphy. So I won't unroll it here, but we did unroll it earlier today. So. So if you, uh, you can see that there, right?
Fantastic.
I don't know if you can, uh, zoom in on that. Probably not. But anyway, the, uh, there's that whole list and it's, um, and I think it's a, a good representation of all you've done, uh, for Livermore. That's incredible, and I wanted to, uh, thank you. And then of course.
So Sue actually told me, she, you know, if you, if you don't go into the studio without knocking, because she says, I'm, I'm working on something. And, uh, so that must have been it, because she's quite a calligrapher. And, uh, she does beautiful work. So, uh, my goodness, that's, that's beautiful.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think we've kind of raised the bar, but I don't think anybody else is gonna, you know, match your, uh, accomplishments. They're definitely big shoes, and I think this, uh, kind of is a good representation. So.
Wow.
Yeah. So in addition, you know, we have a, a plaque for you as well. And it, uh, has the, uh, bottom line now, therefore, from the proclamation I just read. But again, let's see if I can get it up there. You can see that. So we have that for you. So then, one other thing that I would like to let people know is, um, John was very kind enough to write me a letter as, you know, as the incoming mayor and give me the benefit of all of his years of experience. So here's the letter. Really good advice. I'm looking forward though to the next hundred pages, because I'm gonna need that. But what I would like to, um, suggest, if, if you're up for it, John, is if you could, uh, distill some of these things for the council members, because I think it's very valuable for all of us, not just the mayor. And I would like to, uh, suggest if you could do that, then when we have our upcoming, uh, norms and values, I think some of your thoughts here would be very helpful for us to, uh, incorporate in how we do business officially. I think a lot of it has been understood, but I think it's, um, the way you've conducted the, uh, council over the years has really led to the, its success and it's, uh, being a very collaborative, collegial, respectful, uh, environment. And we've all been very professional. So I think this is, um, uh, just wonderful. And so I, I just, I can't say enough about how much I have appreciated our relationship. And I'm looking forward to having your advice, uh, as we go forward on a regular basis. Uh, I think it'll be very helpful. So thank you. And then I would like to, uh, turn it open to, uh, anyone else who would like to say some things.
Mayor, we actually received a video from Congressman Swalwell this afternoon that he asked to be played this evening.
My goodness.
So can we, uh, do that after, uh, the other council members have their chance, and then I think that would, then we can play that. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Can you just insert what I said before right here? I'll just move.
I think they can do that where they can clip the video, you know, chop it.
I was kind of kidding, but thank you. Thank you very much, John.
Thank you.
Dave, from one chemist to another, uh, and a former neighbor when you lived a couple of doors down. I've known John and Sue for a long time. And, uh, I've always appreciated your enthusiasm and support for this community. I don't, I think, in terms of the shoes that one has to fill, with the incoming, uh, mayor, I think part of it is just the love of this community that, uh, is almost immeasurable from John. And, um, so I, I certainly appreciate that. I also, uh, Mr. Warner made a point about your professionalism. And I, I think that's, uh, another important point. I, the way you conduct the meetings, uh, with great respect for the folks that come to speak, I think has been, uh, something we can all learn from, and I have always appreciated that. And lastly, I don't know how you find the time to do all the activities that you've done. I mean, it's just amazing. I mean, the list. You know, we heard a lot of lists of what your accomplishments have been. And I don't remember who read it, but the number of, I mean, Eagle Court of Honors and Blue and Gold dinners and, and weed blows and things like that. I mean, that's just amazing. I mean, those go on top of all the other things that one expects of a mayor. And, uh, John, you're to be congratulated for reaching out and being available for any of those activities that people invite you to attend. for any of those activities that people invite you to attend. And so I think those are remarkable achievements on on your part, in addition to all the visible things that you see around town. And I certainly will miss working with you and have admired your leadership the last four years on council. So congratulations to you and to Sue.
Well, thank you. And I'm not going anywhere. I'm I'm going to stay here and enjoy the town that we've helped to create. But, you know, as far as the Eagle Scout Courts of Honor and the the Blue and Gold dinners, you know, how do you know something's important? It's because the mayor shows up, right? And 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 why is it important? Because the mayor's there. So these are reasons to celebrate within the community. And that's why the community comes together to celebrate. So it's always been an an honor for me to to recognize these milestones. And and Dr. Carling, you're an Eagle Scout. So so you get that. You understand how important that is.
I do.
But it's much appreciated. Not everybody does it. So that's the point.
Well, thank you.
John, at the risk of repeating myself here, I just wanted to say how wonderful it's been to work with you for just four years, but it's, I I always admire your energy. If anybody, it's hard to make me get tired. But I see your schedule sometimes and where you are, what you're doing, and I just I I take a nap. You know, I just I really appreciate all the work you do and the way you've reached out with every corner of this community to make it feel a part of of what Livermore is all about. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you.
So I think at this point, then, can we play that video? Is that appropriate?
Oh. Oh, we're on mute.
And as the mayor of this great city, as Livermore residents, we are so glad that you answered that call of service to stand up and make sure that this is always a great city, a safe city, a prospering city. You brought your expertise in water to make sure that even during a drought, we were always seeking to find innovation, innovative solutions. As we see congestion on the rise, commute times getting longer and longer, you've been one of the fiercest advocates for ValleyLink to take thirty plus thousand cars off the road each day so people can spend more time with their family and less time in traffic. You've made this city better than when you first took over on the council and later as mayor. But most importantly, you're just a good guy. And I've loved having you as a friend. I know there's a lot of other things you're going to do to serve in the years ahead. But so many of us have benefited because you did answer that call to service. And you worked so hard every day, putting your love for this great city, for the people who work at our national laboratories, putting them first, ahead of yourself. That's selfless service. And that defines the career in elected office for John Marchand. So thank you again, John. Congratulations and be well.
Wow. And I I think that was Cricket. That was Cricket. Because she's she's getting big. Wow. But that was, thank you so much. That was very special. And again, Congressman Swalwell has been a tremendous advocate for us. Every time I go back to Washington, D.C., he takes the time to meet with us. He's given us tours of the the House. He's been a consummate host. So certainly appreciate the service that that he's and you talk about tireless service. He's the poster person for that.
So I think, John, you're still mayor and that we need a a resolution to accept the canvas of voters.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Monroe makes the motion to accept the canvas.
I'll second.
Uh, Councilmember Carling seconds the motion. So if I if I don't, as long as I don't hold the vote, I'm still mayor.
Do you want to be still mayor, though, is the question?
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I think, why don't you, you know, postpone it, you know?
No, 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 no. I I'm waiting for I'm waiting for matters initiated.
I just I just want to say that, you know, that was a lovely video with Congressman Swalwell, but Cricket Cricket totally upstaged it.
Oh, absolutely. Oh.
That's my discussion.
Yeah, Cricket Cricket rocked it. She was great. So with that, roll call, please. Oh, wait a minute. Um. Oh, sorry. Yeah, okay, we can do that. Okay, so roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Aye.
Councilmember Coomer.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Aye.
Mayor Marchand.
Aye. All right. So with that, we have passed the motion and the next thing to do is to adjourn the meeting. And then we will reconvene. It's going to be, I think, about a ten-minute break while they rearrange the everything here. So we'll take a few-minute break. And then what I will do is I will use the perpetual ceremonial gavel to adjourn the meeting. Sina Dia, thank you all so very much. It has been a tremendous privilege.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Hear me. At this point, do we do the the oath?
Yes, if you are ready, we can go ahead and do your oath and then we will move on to Councilmember Kick and then Councilmember Carling.
Well, good.
Okay with me.
Okay. Vice Mayor Warner, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Bob Warner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear.
That I will bear.
True faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Mayor Warner.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Mayor Warner.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mayor Warner.
It's going to take a while to get used to that, frankly. But thank you.
Not that long.
Next, we will have Councilmember Kick.
I, Brittany Kick. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against.
Foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carling, if you're ready, please raise your right hand.
I had on mute first.
I, please state your name.
I, Bob Carling.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear.
That I will bear.
True faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.